Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting Tuesday, February 10th. Please stand for a motion.
The United States of America and to regard with which stands one nation under God indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
That's moment of silence for our troops that act of duty. Thank you. Ask the council to introduce the person referring.
Alan Zappo, District 3.
Henry Martin.
Rich Meisakowski.
Rick Carlson.
Mary Fornier, District 3.
Calvin Brown, District 1.
Tell Burke Tracy back listed on the ballot.
Mayor Clint Hightower. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on January 13th, 2015.
So moved. Motion made secondly, discussion.
Hearing not all in favor.
I oppose.
Close motion passes.
Good evening. Shaun Rivas, 331 Castor Road, Bristol, Connecticut. Here tonight to talk about the development and the plan of conservation development that we're doing here on some part of a state plan, which I've been trying to let everybody know. Basically, the state debt continues to rise, federal debt continues to rise, people are leaving this state in droves, it's number one exodus state in the nation. And it's the attitudes of the people are reflected in the plan of conservation development survey, if you look at the survey, 25% of Bristol residents don't see themselves living here within the next five years. They want to move. Does anybody here know why they want to move? Has anybody looked at the plan of conservation development survey?
Yes, and actually there's a lot of data in there Shaun, and I think you're extrapolating certain pieces of it.
Okay, well, please allow me to do so because I think there's other people that are also doing the same thing. See, what a lot of people don't realize is before they did this survey, there's a little part in the draft of the plan of conservation development that says time and money. For a number of years, local residents, business owners, and government and civic leaders have expressed interest in the future of downtown. During this period, it has become apparent that in order to achieve lasting success, transforming the goal of downtown revitalization into bricks and mortar reality will be a long-term incremental process that involves a long-term commitment by both the public and private sectors. Like the urban renewal in the 1960s reshaping the face of downtown Bristol will likely require an infusion and expenditure of public funds. It may also require the municipal exercise of appropriate development and design controls, as well as provision by city government of the array of public spaces, both traditional and non-traditional. In other words, downtown revitalization will inevitably necessitate the formation of partnerships, financial and otherwise, between the public-private sector. So basically, what it's saying is, we're going to need to have a public-private partnership and it's going to rely on public debt. Okay? So, I doubt that anybody was briefed on that when they were asked what their concerns were, but yet, when they were asked what was the number one thing that the city of Bristol can do to improve the quality of life, lower taxes was the first answer. But the conclusion of the draft of the POCD is that we must redevelop downtown to make taxes lower, which will require an infusion of public funding. So, if you look through the answers and you look at everything that has to do with public transportation and housing throughout the POCD, you'll find that less than 2% of the respondents actually thought it was a good idea to spend money on affordable housing and on public transportation, but yet, the conclusion is, we need to redevelop. And it has to do with the state's plans, which obviously, I'm not going to get to tonight, so I guess I'll prepare that for next time.
Thank you Shaun.
Couldn't be more prepared.
Dave Hamlin.
Sorry, we're running a little bit cold. My name is Dave Hamlin. I'm a lifelong Bristol resident, as well as a business owner, first, family business owner for the past 70 years. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposal to purchase the former Sabino's restaurant property and to convert it into additional parking for Muzzy Field. As residents, we ask our city government to do a lot. We ask them to pamper to our individual needs, strengthen our children's education, provide an excellent fire and police department, hire and train quality city workers, and set the minimum standard of living for our residents. We also look to our elected leaders to have a community vision and to take bold steps when the opportunity presents itself. This administration and council has demonstrated that you have the vision and the guts to move the city forward. Muzzy Field is one of our city's crown jewels. The newly renovated courtyard is professional and inviting, the only thing lacking is adequate parking. Look at any successful venue and you'll see plenty of parking. My father used to have this favorite saying, "Parking is king without a your apesment." So I urge you to take the necessary step, purchase the property, remove a potential eyesore, and expand the fantastic vision of the front of the park. You hold the power of change in your hand, and now's the time to use it. Thank you.
Dave, I have a question.
Yes.
Is it about 40 parking spots?
Somewhere in that range.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll get that later. Because we're going to have a report from Edso.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rich?
Rick Luntine, 190 Hoover Avenue, Bristol. I'm the general manager of the Bristol Blues baseball team. In case you don't know, we're the new tenants of Muzzy Field for the coming season and many years to come, and I know I'm looking at a number of Bristol Blues fans in this room. Anything that create more parking, we are 100% behind. It is, and I can't put it in better words than Dave, that was spectacular, he nailed it. We are going to provide quality, family, affordable, fun entertainment at Muzzy Field, and one of the things that we need to provide is some parking. And hopefully, with this addition, the people will say, "Let's go to the ballpark." And that's really why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Let me tell you that we're excited to have you down from the day you won that, and myself met your owners of the team, we were very excited. And let me tell you right now that the first ballgame, which is on...
June 5th.
June 5th, the city is going to sponsor the fireworks that night. So, we're excited, I know you're looking to do fireworks other nights, and hopefully other companies will step up and sponsor, but the city of Bristol will sponsor the first night. And we're also going to be doing other things to help the ballpark and attract people, because it's a positive thing, not only for the West End, but for all of Bristol. We're excited to have you down.
Well, thank you very much, that's fantastic. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Shaun Cohen.
I'm sorry, Steve. I knew it was Steve, sorry.
That's okay, we can do a name change. I've been called a lot of other things. Steve Cohen, 331 Main Street. I just wanted to come up tonight and to thank all of you I didn't get a chance to last month for the decision you made on Bingham School. I can't tell you how refreshing that is, because I can tell you, I've lived in Bristol all my life, and so many times, we see things, it's politics. And that's why people get disgusted and move away. And it was very encouraging to see that that didn't happen with Bingham School. Of course, I was against the plan of Bristol Hospital, because it involved tearing the building down, big surprise. But it wasn't a good plan, and now we're going to see the building saved, and I just want to thank all of you for your support on that. Second thing, in regards to Sabino's, I think that would also be a good idea to probably take that down, but also to look at a lot of other rundown properties along that corridor, and you get all kinds of parking there too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcement, starting from the floor.
Yes, Your Honor, a couple I just wanted to share with everyone, some of the things that happened this past Saturday. Give a shout out to the Mamros Memorial Library for a wonderful ceremony that they held honoring a former sword of Mr. Mamros, Colonel Mamros. Mr. Murdock, who knew Colonel Mamros and had the sword in his possession for a while, decided to donate it to the Mamros Library, and it's there on display now, and there was a beautiful ceremony this past Saturday that I was happy to attend as part of the Library Board of Directors, or the liaison to the Library Board of Directors. So I encourage members of the community to stop by there and check it out if you get a chance. Also, I got to go to the Charlotte Expo. Did anybody else go to the Charlotte Expo? That was pretty fun. That was good. I didn't know that there was a Charlotte Expo in town, but that just goes to show how much happens in Bristol without, you know, people realizing. So if it happens again next year, I encourage everybody else to go. Also, on Saturday, February 28th, at Dunphy's Ice Cream Parlor on Stafford Avenue, the counselors Ellen Zappo, Sasu, Mary Fornier, and I will be holding office hours for members of the community. We'll be there at Dunphy's, meeting with members of the public from noon to 2:00 p.m. So we encourage anybody from the city that would like to come out and talk to us about things that are happening, or share your thoughts or ideas, to come and talk to us. That's Saturday, February 28th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at Dunphy's Ice Cream Parlor on Stafford Avenue. That's it for me.
Hi. I wanted to say again this month that the West End Association has Taste of Bristol tickets available. I'm sure Mr. Hamlin has some with him, as well as Councilwoman Zappo and myself. Again, for anybody that didn't hear this last month, for $5, a $5 donation, you get a ticket that gives you 20% off a large number of restaurants in Bristol for the entire month of March. In other words, you can only go to one restaurant once, but there's well over 30 restaurants on the list, so you can make your way to many places for $20 off your order, and it's a great fundraiser for the West End Association, and helps them fund the festival in the summer at Rockwell Park, so it's important that we support that. Also, another thing that I say often here is, please give blood if you can. This month in particular, the weather has impacted the Red Cross, and so they're going to be trying to make up for some of their blood drives in the coming weeks, so if you're able to, please check and find a blood drive that you can donate to. And lastly, I want to wish a happy birthday to a resident who's going to turn 101 next week. Marie Fornier, I believe, is the oldest voter in the 3rd district, so she's near and dear to my heart, she's been voting since Franklin Roosevelt was president, and she's turning 101 on the 19th, so I want to wish her a happy birthday and health and happiness to her. That's it for me.
Just one quick, thank you to the Public Works Department, just for the wonderful, incredible job that you did cleaning our streets, the whole department has done for these last, for this last month, basically, so, well, thank you to you and your staff.
Just one report for announcements, and today was the day that many people in the city were watching for the transplant operation for the regaining family. And as of this afternoon, Jen's surgery was completed, and it went flawlessly, and as we were coming into our meeting, they were anticipating Matt coming out of surgery, and so far, so good for that. So, I think prayers and good thoughts for the regaining family. For those of you who don't know, Matt is an employee of the Public Works Department, and his father is a former complement. Thank you.
That's great news.
I have a couple. First, this afternoon, I filmed the Central Connecticut Now with Mike Schroeder, it's a nutmeg show. It will be airing Thursday, February 12th at 7:30, Sunday, February 15th at 11:00 a.m., Tuesday, February 17th at 12:00 p.m. It's also on Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier Universe Channel 99. Snow removal. First, let me say, I second what Councilman Martin said, our crews have been doing tireless work, and I can't say enough good things about what a job they've been doing with the back-to-back-to-back storms that we've had. And hopefully Thursdays, we'll go out to see them, we don't see them. The city will be coming in 3:00 a.m. Wednesday through Friday to address snow issues, working on Saturday as well. There will be following the excess snow removal plan, we will be addressing downtown areas, as well as improving conditions in forceful business areas. Right now, we need to put our efforts into improving sightlines at intersections and opening areas around troublesome bus stops. Beginning tomorrow morning, we'll have trucks working with loaders clearing intersections, beginning with the intersections along state roads. After the state roadway intersections, we'll be working on intersections with cities' minor arterial connector roads. We will then move into local streets of cul-de-sacs. We'll be in Chippens Hill and South Mountain rural areas with our large snow blower addressing drifting. And once we've completed work on major intersections, we will use two blowers to white streets, blowing snow back into lawns, taking care to minimize impact on driveways and sidewalks. So I just ask the public, we have a lot of snow in a short period of time, be patient with us, we are getting to you, we are opening up the roads, but it's going to take time. And, you know, that's it. Let us know if you have anything that we've missed, and we'll put it on our list. Committee reports, starting with my far left.
Yes, Your Honor, one from the Parks Department. Next Monday and Tuesday during school vacation, the Parks Department is going to be offering a two-day paralelisk escape camp from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There will be swimming, bowling, laser tag, a visit from the art truck, and other special entertainment. So that's next Monday and Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The ice rink has opened and will remain open as long as the weather cooperates. Please call the park office to check on the times. Last week, the Park Department held a frozen float festival at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center, and the event was well attended. Those wishing to go study can do so at Nelson Field located on Burlington Avenue. That's it for the Parks Department.
Not for me.
Councilwoman. You go first.
Two quick committee reports. The first one from the Boulevard. We've had the unfortunate circumstance of being snowed out for our last couple of meetings, we're anxiously awaiting a time where we can meet, and we are tentatively scheduled for Thursday, and hopefully that storm does go out to sea, because we're hoping to meet with our consultants and get the anticipated cost-revenue estimates for some of the items that we're waiting for. We continue to have prospective businesses and tenants contact us, and there's been a variety of showings in the building for people to get an idea of what the potential is. I believe there's going to be a motion from Real Estate tonight concerning events in the spring, and we also have an active subcommittee group that are meeting on various aspects, so that we can coalesce a report together, which I hope to have in advance of the March meeting for everyone on the council to digest. I think that that's it. We also have a placeholder general bond request with the state legislative delegation. Obviously, that number was a placeholder number, and will be changed to reflect what our consultants tell us some of those initial needs are. In terms of code enforcement, it's been a very busy winter, despite it being a dormant time for what you would typically call for complaints, we've had 21 active cases since the last council meeting. One of them, which we won't belabor, but 94 Divinity Street was covered very well in the Bristol press. It was a major issue that had a lot of moving pieces, which required full team code inspections, and has since been condemned. I think it's, again, illustrative of the fact that when all committees and all departments are communicating, that good things can happen, and from a life safety perspective, that particular house had 20-something people living in it. And if that police officer hadn't immediately realized what those issues were and activated that, there could have been a real tragedy there in the ensuing leaks with the cold weather and the electrical and heating system being what it was. So, I think that part is working very well. We are currently constructing a case study based on properties that have been vacant in foreclosure, lispendous, or had chronic maintenance problems over several years. And unfortunately, those properties do exist. One of them, which is one of our poster child properties, is going on 20 years of having a property issue. Change of ownership, change of bank financing, but for the most part, it has been an egregious issue in a neighborhood for 20 years. So the Banking Commission has offered to work with us if we gave them some indication of some of these problems and what we as city departments have been encountering. So that spreadsheet is being constructed with input from many departments, and will be forwarded to the Banking Commission to see if they can prod some action with some of these mortgage and finance holders. Tonight, we have also two ancillary items on the agenda, which I will not cover here, but we have another tax abatement that's coming through the tax assessment freeze application, which is Agenda Item Number 14, and we also have revision to the shopping cart ordinance, which is Item Number 16A. If there's any questions when we get to that, I'll be happy to answer them then.
Thank you. I have no reports. Unfinished business, starting my far right.
I do have a report, brief report, updating the feral cat issue. Those of you who were here last month know that we had many people come to express concern about both the body acres specifically, but in general, community cats, and the fact that it was a burgeoning issue. We've met twice, there's a small working group that met before this meeting, and we just have a few recommendations that we'd like to put on the table for everyone to think about. No action really required, but we think that these might be some very easy fixes, and no taxpayer dollars required. What we've accomplished in the last month is that many of the groups that are already working in these areas are now talking to each other, it's kind of the same model as code enforcement, and there's an event that is being planned as an offshoot to everything that we've done, Saturday, February 25th, at Asbury Methodist Church in Forestville, from 9:00 until noon. Those who are sympathetic to this issue, or would like to in some small way help, can participate by bringing their refundable bottles and cans, pet food, and also non-perishable items for families, because in recognition of Asbury giving us that space, we're hoping to make some donations to their backpack program, where they send food home with children who might not otherwise eat over the weekend. So that's Saturday, February 21st, at Asbury Church in Forestville. So there's volunteers that are needed for that event as well. I'm going to forward the one flyer that I have over to the mayor, in the hope that we can make copies for City Hall vote boards, as well as the Facebook page and website.
Just pay me note to contact you tomorrow, but...
Yeah, you can have it. The other thing that we're looking for, again, not from city resources, but there are spay neuter vouchers available, and there are still some needed for some of the body acre cats, as well as a few others that have been entered into the TNR program. So we are working with nonprofits in order to identify those vouchers in order to complete that. There is going to be a report at the body acres, at the Bristol Housing Authority on the body acres issue, next week at their meeting to update that book, from what we understand, that's an ongoing process, and there's still a few cats that are left that need to be tracked. We are also tonight going to, on behalf of that working group, make an official referral to the ordinance committee, and it is to adopt a TNR ordinance for the city of Bristol, modeled on the town of Wyndham ordinance. And I have that hard copy ordinance that I will forward to the Corporation Council's office, but that is a form of a motion.
Number two. Second, was made secondly, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Close motion passes. Councilman, I'd like to thank you for taking the lead on this issue, I know everybody was pretty worked up on it, but I'd like you for taking the lead on that. Any other questions, Miss? Councilman?
I have two items, I'm just not sure where they go. The first one was something that came out of real estate, and I had thought that it would be a committee report, but I'm not the chair of real estate, but we had made a motion in our last real estate committee to send to the council the question of whether the Memorial Boulevard Task Force can approve events to take place in that building between now and the fall. I don't have the exact wording in front of me, I think we might have said September. And we were basically saying that it really shouldn't be real estate's purview to say what the task force can do, but that we would ask the council to recommend that the Memorial Boulevard Task Force be given the ability to schedule events in the Memorial Boulevard building between now and the fall. And again, what date in the fall we might want to put on that as an end date would be up for discussion. So again, I don't know.
Okay, so if there's not a motion prepared for real estate, then we can just make it here?
Yes, that's my understanding, I have not seen one.
Okay. I can call up the minutes, because it was within the minutes, if we wanted exactly what that is.
If you want to go ahead and make a motion, I'm fine with that, go ahead.
So the, well, she, do you want to just restate the motion with the council for...
Was to recommend to the city council that they approve that the Memorial Boulevard Task Force be allowed to schedule events in the Memorial Boulevard building between now and the fall. Again, if there's a specific end date.
I just, okay, do I have a second to that? Second. Second, motion made secondly. Can I ask if we could just amend that to include that any functions have to be self-sustaining until we have, do we have an actual use, that the city's going to keep the building or not?
What do you mean by self-sustaining? In other words, when Councilwoman did her memorial day there, it funded itself, the city didn't have to outlay any money. Oh, absolutely, I think that was understood.
Can we put that part of the motion?
Certainly, so amended.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anything else, Councilman, can you say again, two?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. The second one would be that we, at our last city council meeting, we forwarded to the Board of Finance the question of whether the proceeds from O'Connell and Bingham could be earmarked for Memorial Boulevard, and I hadn't heard anything one way or another, I don't know if...
I can tell you that wasn't discussed, we had a special Board of Finance meeting, so we couldn't bring it up. When's the next Board of Finance meeting?
February 20...
So at the next, Robin, can we make sure that gets on the agenda for the next Board of Finance, please?
Thank you, that was just a question I hadn't heard. Thank you.
No, Your Honor.
I am going to ask, under unfinished business, if we can have Tom DeNoe come up, please, and just, if you could speak a little bit about ESPN and their new building and what happened with the tax codes, particularly under the impression that the city was surprised by this, we were not at all.
No. Under the City-Town Development Act, ESPN Representative Walt Reiner, who was their SVP controller, came in with an application on January 18th, 2012. It's presented to the Economic Development Director and the VDA, and specifically, there are criteria that they have to meet to follow certain schedules. Now, what happens in the development of a building of this size, obviously, the magnitude is so great, that a number of employees is a requirement, the number of square footage is a requirement, and along with the development process that ESPN undertakes, the building is constructed over a number of years. So we value those improvements as the building is constructed, and that is added to the grant list. In 2013, we had roughly $30 million worth of building value. That's 100% value of completed improvements. When we got out to August of 2012, or 2014, excuse me, the building received its certificate of occupancy, which now makes it eligible to capitalize on the full program benefit, which essentially takes that building value and evaporates it down to only 8% taxable. And that's where essentially the city roughly lost about $20 million in assessed value from the previous grant list. And that's a big number to make up. We did see increases in the motor vehicle grant list, and we also did see other components of the real estate grant list grow, and one key component was Building 13, which is on ESPN's campus. That's also in the City-Town Development Act. That building has been ramping up to 100% taxable, it's close to that margin, I think it has one or two years left.
But this is something that we expected, nobody caught us by surprise, we talked about this last year during budget process.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to stress that, that we were not surprised at all by this, we knew this was happening. And this is an incentive for companies to come and build such a massive building at such a huge dollar amount.
Absolutely correct, yes. Absolutely correct, yes.
Justin, did we miss anything on that that you want to add on that? Are we good? Justin Mally is our academic developer.
No, I'll just say, this is an example, the City and Town Development Act was just approved by the voters overwhelmingly in November. It was on the ballot, and this is an example of an incentive program that could, we have different incentive programs for tax payment, and this particular program would cover a project like ESPN's.
Thank you. Take your time.
Good. Robin, do you know if the three-year projected, budget projections that Glenn has for us, is that included in those projections?
The ramping back up of the.
Of the ESPN, the decrease in the assessed value?
It would be, I'm not, actually, I'm not sure, Henry. He just sent that out today, so I'm not sure what methodologies he'd use in figuring that out.
Yeah, we should put that on there, huh?
Yeah, I can find out.
Yeah, then even programs that Justin asked, that may affect that, should also be included in that.
Sure, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, starting my front row.
Well, I have two process issues. The first one is, I read in the press about the synthetic field report. So is that coming here at some point?
I don't think the report is finalized yet. They're in discussion, but it's not finalized. Last I talked to Dave Mills, which was last week, they haven't formally voted on it yet.
Okay.
Let it done, and we will get it.
It will come here?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other issue that I wanted to bring up, I'm sure you received phone calls as well, the unbelievable amounts of snow that are in town. And one of our business owners was inquiring about the center wall being used for private entities who may need to move snow in an emergency. Is that something we've ever done in the past, or is it something we can entertain? Because I know other communities do open up certain spaces.
No, we're, we've never done it, and we're not going to entertain it. There's reasons why we don't want to take a chance of having the snow come in that's contaminated and get stumped on our yard. Will, do you want to speak to that? Please? But we also don't want, in my opinion, we don't want to open up indoors, back where everyone in town dumps snow on our properties.
Well, we do have the issues of contaminants. I mean, I know that the materials we bring in from the roadways have contaminants, but we somewhat control those. We know what they are. And the snow dump that we operate is, actually, we have registered with state DEP. They know that we use that for municipal purposes. But the others, there are private entities that do have space to allow people to dump snow, and we're not in competition to them.
Okay, so the fact that we have 15 acres in our congested downtown, that we use that as a snow dump, we're not going to make it available to any of our larger taxpayers who have constraints based on the DEP permit process?
That's correct. Thank you, Will.
Counsel?
Yeah, I have a resolution to report. First, the City of Bristol has applied for and been approved to receive a brownfields assessment grant in the amount of $125,000 from the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for environmental testing on a property at 894 Middle Street. Whereas, it is useful and desirable and in the public interest of the city to make efforts to characterize and remediate the property at 894 Middle Street. It resulted the City Council of the City of Bristol hereby approves acceptance of the brownfields assessment grant in the amount of $125,000, and that Mayor Kenneth, Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine, Mayor of the City of Bristol, is authorized to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, along with any other documents necessary to effectuate this grant.
Can I have a second? Second, most main second. Very quick, can I just ask you to get up and give us a quick little overview of why we're seeing this again, or turn it on, or do you want to speak on it?
Thank you. Sure, Mayor, we applied for this grant with the assistance of Justin Mally in order to characterize this property more fully. We don't own the property. However, we know that the property is affected, does have some contamination. The Commissioner, Brownfields Commissioner, did tell us that we were eligible for this grant last spring. We did make application. We were very successful. We see this as a way of dealing with the property in the future, and we understand it's going to take much more, will take remediation grants, and would like to bring the property back to life. But this is the first step in that process, to get to a Phase Three, and also to get to a remediation number so we can make grant applications.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Let me say that when we met with Justin Mally, the Commissioner in my office, he was very, and the attorneys, very great to work with and offered his help any way he can. So I look forward to working not only on this project, but other projects with the Commissioner. And that's all I have to say. Resolution, starting my front row.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Anything else? Counselor, any business?
I'm sorry, no.
No, Your Honor.
Chair has none. Resignations?
Two resignations. One is from Ricky DuPhard from Mayor's Task Force on Energy Conception, Confunction, and the second is from Art Ward from the Board of Finance.
Motion to accept instead of letter of thank you?
Second.
Motion made, wait, second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments, I have one appointment, to appoint Sean Dunn to replace Frank Stosky, Jr., through your term to 218. Motion made, second. Discussion.
I have discussion. I think that Commissioner Stosky has served very admirably in his position and would wish to be reappointed. So similar to the conversations we've had about balancing change versus expertise, I think that this is yet another situation where the value that Commissioner Stosky brings to the public works for far outweighs the need for change. It's akin to Little League, where in T-ball, everybody gets a chance to hit the ball as opposed to the major leagues where you never take out your best player. So I'm going to oppose the nomination for Mr. Dunn without prejudice.
And then the discussion. Yeah, just wanted to say that Frank Stosky is certainly a qualified candidate person, and I hope that the mayor would see fit to appoint another board that would be suitable for him.
I have the discussion. Let me say that I think Frank Stosky was great working with him, not only as mayor but as a councilman. But as I stated during my campaign a year and a half ago, I'm making changes on boards. Just because you're on the board doesn't mean you're going to be reappointed. Nothing personal to Frank. I think he's a great guy, and we will look at other boards to put him on. But I think change is good on boards. I think it brings new ideas, brings new interest to the boards. And I think Sean Dunn is very, very well qualified for this position. So that being said, I'll ask for all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no, two no's, three no's. The Council of Zalco, four-year, and Councilman Brown. Thank you, motion passes. Item number 10.
Quest for, quest for street discontinement of a portion of Pine Street between Heather Green and Sycamore Streets, Your Honor. This should get referred to the Planning Commission, Board of Education, Board of Public Works, Police Commission, and Fire Commission, and also set for a public hearing on April 16th prior to the fourth.
Motion. Move to the group. Motion made, second. Discussion.
Can I just have a clarification as to why it needs to go to April 16th? Is that for allowing the referrals to come back?
Yeah, well, actually, the public hearing is scheduled because we need to get all the viewing owners, and we send out letters to each viewing owner, and then there's a time limit as far as also advertising. So the March meeting could be a little bit tight. You know, I did talk to Walter. Again, it may be a little bit tight depending on, you know, what we get done. So he thought it might be better to push it off to their next meeting, typically before the Board of Public Works meeting.
Okay, and I would just ask that we monitor the situation enough. We have all of that in place, that if March is an option, because this is a tax sensitive issue.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 11.
Discussion of Coppermine Brook flood mitigation project.
Will I want to speak on this? On number 11. Coppermine Brook. Yes, sir. Do you want to, did you have executive session on this later?
That would be up to the council. You have my memorandum. We, we have the project, we've designed the project, we've attempted to get the necessary easements to move the project forward, and at our level, we've been unable to do so. So we would, just making the council aware of that situation, and whether some intervention on the partisan council members directly, or whether some other action the council would choose to take otherwise, a decision to change the scope of the project.
Can I have a motion to go on executive session on this later? The reason I say that is because we're talking about purchasing some land, and it's going to be some purchasing price that we're going to be discussing.
Can I make a comment that doesn't have anything to do with pricing?
Sure.
I, I'm just wondering if this might benefit from some sort of meeting with the neighbors? You know, to sort of address their concerns or see if we can troubleshoot some of their concerns?
We have, we have met with the property owners, and they simply are not willing, we've reached out to them, and we've had two public meetings regarding this project, and right now, the individuals, property owners, are not willing to grant the city the easements.
Okay, I just, it wasn't clear that, you know.
Can we, can we, let's pull our table until the end, and then we'll make a motion to go on executive session.
I'll make a motion that's made to one of the items for discussion.
Okay. Motion made, wait a second. Second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Will. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding authorization for Mayor Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine to sign the Connecticut DOT master municipal agreement for construction projects. I believe that there is a resolution to read.
I'm going to read a resolution. It starts with B, resolved.
What number is this, Tom? It's number 12, and there's just actually, second to the last paragraph is just three words. I can, well, I thought I was going to say agree that.
I can do it. I can do it. May it resolve that the hour of Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine, Mayor, is hereby authorized to sign the Connecticut Department of Transportation Agreement entitled, excuse me, master municipal agreement for construction projects.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 13.
A word of contract, 2P1559, professional services related to improvements to Mossy Field, Steintrude LLC, $76,050 pending approval by the Board of Park Commissioners at their February 18th meeting, and authorization for Mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the contract.
Approved. Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 14.
Approval of tax assessment freeze application of Leonard Badenow, owner of 482 South Street, for rehabilitation of a lighted property, with the restoration of the senior family structure for Bristol Code of Ordinances in Section 5-97.
So moved.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 15.
Resolution regarding authorization for Mayor Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine to execute grant agreement with State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for a press box at Bristol Eastern High School. There is a resolution to read.
I'm going to read a resolution.
I will read it. I'm just, one, it says one second remaining to my download hearing. Still not downloading.
Me too. My second.
This has never happened before.
Here we go.
Last. Resolve the whole thing. Okay. Resolve that Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine, Mayor of the City of Bristol, be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of this municipal corporation a grant agreement with the State of Connecticut for financial assistance to design and construct a press box at the Bristol Eastern High School Athletic Field, CPAP 2015-08. In addition, that Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine, Mayor, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with the State of Connecticut. It is further certified that Kenneth Beatty-Cocaine was elected Mayor of the City of Bristol. His term of office began on November 11th, 2013, and will continue until November 9th, 2019. As the Mayor of the City of Bristol serves as the Chief Executive Officer for the City of Bristol and has both the authority and the office to sign on behalf of the City of Bristol a grant agreement for financial assistance to design and construct a press box at the Bristol Eastern High School Athletic Field, CPAP 2015-08.
Much as I love the date that you read.
And you're right.
Sure, it's going to happen. Roll call, starting my far right.
Are we correcting the date on this resolution?
Correcting the date. Actually, I didn't have discussion. Correcting the date, discussion.
I'm for correcting the date.
Let me thank Representative Betty Bulges on this. She really pushed this forward and got it through in a timely manner, so I want to, I want to thank her for getting this done for Eastern High School. Any other discussions? Hearing none, resolution, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 16.
Consent calendar, and there are five items. 16A is approval of tax refunds dated February 4th, 2015. 16B is to place on file a recommendation from the Board of Police Commissioners regarding approvals to close a portion of Ronzo Road Extension to make it part of ESPN's campus. 16C is the Ordinance Committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances in Section 2-99 of our business. 16D is Ordinance Committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances in Section 2-101, regular meeting schedule of city council committees. And 16E is the Ordinance Committee to waive the reading of proposed amendments and schedule a public hearing on February 18th, 2015 at 4:00 p.m. to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 21-21.10, shopping carts. And I believe that Councilman Martin will have an addition to this consent calendar.
I do. I'd like to make a motion to add a new hire report to the consent agenda, please.
Second, most main second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And, Your Honor, can we have, actually, there was a motion to add the.
Add it? Okay, now we're going to vote on the whole consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Make the motion.
All right, let's do it one more time. Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good job, Counsel. Item 17.
It's executive session to discuss consideration of offer by John and Joseph Spino to purchase real property at 240 Park Street, Bristol. And there was an executive session from earlier, which is to discuss perhaps action or adverse action regarding Coppermine Brook flood mitigation project.
Just for everybody who has the agenda, item 18, have they taken off the agenda?